And I'm gonna call a meeting to order. We have a copy of the agenda. Can I have an acceptance of the, or actually, is that the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Second. Mr. O'Toole, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Do we have any walk-ins this evening? It's a scarce crowd, but no walk-ins are here, so we'll move on. I assume the new Council on Aging Director is not gonna make it.
Tricia?
Yes, but her resume isn't closed, and she's the current Assistant Director of the Duxbury Council on Aging, so she's starting December 30th, and we'll have her for you January 7th meeting.
Great, so Linda Hayes, congratulations. As Tricia just said, she was the, at the Duxbury Senior Center for four or five years, actually more than that.
And her, what's her start date, Tricia? The 30th?
The 30th.
30th, okay.
Excuse me for one second.
Actually, she was activities coordinator since '04, so she's...
Right, and she's the Assistant Director in Duxbury presently, or, you know, formally, up until she gets here.
Okay, so we'll meet here at the next meeting. Move to item, agenda, agenda item number four.
Move to postpone item, agenda, agenda item number four, which is the presentation of the wind turbine flicker study.
Second, do we need a, no motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor of postponement?
Aye.
Aye. And this is because we have a consultant coming in, and he couldn't make it in because of the weather, so I assume he'll be in at our next meeting. Moving right along. Agenda item number five, Mr. Banger, this is about an abatement for some water bills.
Yes, thank you. We have a very large, a customer with very large water bill, water sewer bill as a result of a burst pipe underneath the house that he purchased next to his property. When he purchased the house in December or so, he neglected to have the water shut off. The pipe froze and subsequently consumed a significant amount of water. He's asked for an abatement of that. And what the, in looking at the billing, as you know, the sewer billing is triggered by the amount of water consumed. None of this water went into the sewer, and so we're suggesting, proposing that we fully abate the sewage cost with the exception of the ord, of the quarterly service charge.
So just so we can get some numbers around it, the sewer bill was $11,879.
Yes.
And the water bill that we're discussing is $14,477.
Yes. And so, we suggest that you abate everything except $57 of the sewer bill, and that as a courtesy to the customer, we would suggest that you abate 25% of the excess water usage. In other words, provide an abatement to him, reduce this bill by $3,600, $3,619. This is what we do, we do this in the past when someone has a leaking lines to their refrigerator, say, and they didn't notice it, it was leaking in the cellar, or went to a crawl space, and then when they get the bill, three months later, they find, oh my gosh, we have a $400 water bill instead of a $40 water bill, and they've applied to the water department showing that they fixed the leak, and they make an explanation, and the water department many times recommends then that we abate the difference between the high bill and their normal bill, and abate 25% of that difference. In this case, that would amount to an abatement of $3,619.
No, a decrease of.
A decrease of.
Let's break them into two different, let's talk about the sewer bill first, because I don't have a problem with the sewer portion.
How is it that, how, if the water pipe broke and the water's leaking, why, why are they getting charged for sewer? What's the point on that?
Your water meter actually regulates how much goes through your sewer.
Yes, the, all the, the meter keeps running, the pipe's broken, the meter's running, so it uses up a million gallons of water, and the sewer bill is calculated...
Based on the water.
Based about how much water that house used.
Not on actually coming out.
Right, there's no actual sewer measurement.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the assumption is that the water that's running out of your pipes is going into your sewer.
So sprink, so you kinda get sprinklers and all that stuff.
Sprinklers and all that, you're, you're paying for your sewer on that as well.
Now, there are times where someone has a, let's say, an elderly parent, and the, the parent didn't realize that the upstairs toilet had been running for three months, you know, small...
Yeah, we, I mean, we'd be a mall.
Yeah, right, okay. So in that case, the water did go into the sewer, and we would recommend that there be a billing for the sewer, because the town did indeed incur significant charges processing the water to make it drinkable, and then processing in, in a...
So this, this water pipe was outside, and million, a million gallons just flowed into the earth.
Yep.
Nobody saw it.
It was vacant.
Right, actually, 1.9 million gallons.
So 2 million gallons, just, no one saw a puddle, no one saw a river?
Nope.
So the thing that's a little different about this abatement, generally leaks happen to residents who own property. They come back from the summer, or something happens, and there's a leak, and they get it fixed. This was a property transfer, not somebody who lived here a long time and found out there was a leak. It was something that didn't happen between the seller and the buyer, so it's a little different in this situation, and that's why it's before you.
And the buyer lived next door, right? Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Well, when you say something happened...
The house, the house is a derelict.
When you say something happened, you mean the buyer or the seller, but someone didn't turn off the water? Fine, I just wanted to make sure I knew what you were talking about when you said something happened, that there was nothing else extraneous going on.
Yeah.
So for that period of time, did the water stay in the seller's name? There was never a transfer?
Uh, the, actually, the, the billing, the way the water, the rules around billing is that the bill is to the property.
Okay, gotcha, okay, right.
It could take up to...
When you sell your house...
I gotcha, okay.
When you sell your house, you know, you, and you have an attorney involved, or you're knowledgeable yourself, you say, okay, I want you to pay your utility bills, you know, your power bill, your phone bill, have all those services shut off in your name, and then you turn them on in your name, okay?
Right.
And that way, that person pays up to that point. Now, you know, you do find situations where people have forgotten to do that, and the new guy gets stuck with the bill from the old person.
This gentleman, this gentleman is the new owner.
This person is the new owner, and it was, lived next door, bought the house next door, which was apparently not in good shape anyway, and his intention has been to tear it down, and, and so, I guess he didn't realize the water was on and left it.
So let's, let's deal with this, the sewer part seems to be more straightforward to me than the water one. So does anyone have any input on the sewer bill? It never went into the sewer system?
Yes.
There's no expenses incurred by the town?
Correct. I feel that that should be fully, that should be abated, except for the portion.
Except for the charges?
Right.
Anyone good with that? Yeah, okay, so, so we agree on that. Now, the water, I mean, we do a number of these, not a ton, but a few every year, and they always seem to be around under $100. So this one is kinda significant because it's $3,000 or $4,000. And then the rat, the reason behind them are always, they're always different, but there always seems to be a little bit of twist to it, you know, like the set of running toilet, an elderly person who did this or that.
Well, the abatement would be $3,000 or $4,000. The amount the person would owe is still on the order of...
I'm saying, what we usually abate is under $100.
Yeah, yeah.
So what do you, what do you guys think on this? Mr. Merg?
I would say we should just follow the same formula we use in the past.
By percentage.
Irrespective of the scale. So if we take the high, take the low, take the difference, and abate 25%, do that. So it's a uniform practice across the board. I put that out as a, not as a motion, but just as a, that's, that's a discussion point, that's one thing we could do, and it seems to make sense.
But I'm always wondering this, gentlemen. Any other, you agree?
I agree with that, but I think for the future, what we might want to do is, we might wanna look at a cap, you know, so that we're not getting up into those numbers.
Yeah, I, I think we shouldn't penalize this individual.
Right.
It raises the issue that, in no event, you know, it's 25%, five-year average, but in no event shall an abatement be greater than X.
Right, let's say whatever it happens to be, whatever we come up with, I mean...
So you're saying an abatement should be greater than, or someone shouldn't owe more than?
No, in other words, if you do a 25% reduction...
Up to $500.
Up to a certain amount of money. You, we, we don't wanna be up in the numbers of, you know, $3,600, I mean.
So if someone was requesting, if the 25% formula worked out that the abatement was, just making it up, $50,000, then that would exceed the cap?
Right.
Okay, just to make sure, just what I understand, so you're talking about the abatement should be capped, not the amount the person owes?
Correct.
See, this is a little bit different, because this is an actual cost of the town. You know, the sewer wasn't, because we didn't do anything. This was water that was pumped and used and...
Right.
Well, treated and created.
See, that's what I was gonna say, like, what's the supposed profit margin per gallon? Because we, ultimately, it's, it's going to the house at some point. It's not all it costs, but at least when you're charging people water, at least, there is some, some revenue that's generated from the increase in water rates. Right?
So the whole town is not paying well, this mishap of...
The, I, I thought I understood your question.
Whenever, it's an enterprise fund, so when we charge the rates and people pay for water...
Right, it's a break-even.
At some point, there is, it's not a complete break-even, because at least there's some profit to be made for the town. That's why we end up with an enterprise at the end of the year with certain amounts of revenue.
Yeah, well, that, and that would show up in retained earnings.
Right, and what I'm saying is, if there was a way to evaluate, is it 25%? Is it 10%? In other words, that to me would be the equitable way of trying to approach this going forward, because we could be actually shorting ourselves by saying, giving him a 25% discount off the bill, we really should be giving him a 10%, because really, it's a 10% net to us.
Right.
The cost is 90%.
Yeah.
So I think going forward, if there was a way, and I don't know, Al, the water department can calculate that, but if there was, to me, that would be the best way of going forward, because I think we've picked, I was trying to figure out why we picked 25%. And one thing I am, I think being consistent in the past, the way we should approach it now, but at least going forward, if we're taking a loss at the 25% discount, we should be charging what the cost is to the town.
25% definitely is cost borne by all residents, all water users. There's, you know, there's, the cost is, there's not that much margin in, at the end of the year, not much money left over in the enterprise at the end of the year.
Certainly not with all the projects, I mean, that we have going on.
Oh, yeah, right, so it definitely...
The reason I have, the reason with this one, I'm looking at it...
Yeah, this shows up, it costs everyone.
Normally, somebody would move in, somebody would move in, they'd be like, wait a minute, what's going on? The water's got a high water, you know, rate, and we're paying, this doesn't make any sense. Maybe they determined that there was a problem with the water, maybe there was a lack of flow or pressure, and they figured it out. In this case, they were absent for at least eight months, until they decided they're gonna tear it down. Immediately, one of the questions I had, that I realized from reading the notes, is that somebody from the water department went up to shut it off, they couldn't shut it off, and that's when they heard a gushing water. One of the questions I had was, was there any water damage? Did they get insurance back? Because that's another thing, in this case, I doubt it, because it sounds like it was going to water.
It was in the silo, yeah.
Subsurface, but...
I have a question. Didn't they get a bill?
At some point during this?
So they got a bill?
Because it took a long time for that gal, those gallons.
Sometimes what happens with some of these, if you don't, at the closing, it goes by the property.
Yeah.
Unless they identify the actual new property owner, you might have to wait until the assessor's office gets the D, then they rec, recognize it, update it. Every town does this, and it's, it doesn't happen immediately unless, sometimes towns will say you have to identify the new owner, and they submit it. I don't know if we do that.
This happened in one quarter.
Yeah.
This happened in one quarter.
Right, it did, so it was only a single bill.
From quarter four, it went from $1,600, to quarter, quarter one, $254,000.
Yep.
So this went from, this, this all happened in one quarter.
Right.
So it showed up on his very next bill.
Yeah.
Al, I just had a quick question, just, just back to what John was saying for a second. So based on, on the usage, not the usage, but on the water that, that was flowing, if you look at the total number, the total of, of the bill versus without 25%, how close do we get to making up the difference on that? So based upon, I don't know what the profit margin is, but based upon the remaining part of the bill, are we close?
Uh...
I mean, obviously, we, we hope to never see anything like this again.
There's, there's two, two ways to look at the cost. One is the, there's the total cost of the, running the operation divided by how many gallons.
Right.
Okay? But, you know, if you made 10% more water, you wouldn't use 10% more money, because there's a, there's a variable cost of producing water.
Okay.
Some of it is kinda fixed.
Right.
So there's a fixed cost and the variable cost, which add up to the total.
Okay.
So if we didn't make, if we didn't produce this water, okay, the... At, I would say 25%, let's see how I say this clearly enough, of the total cost of running the water department...
Yes.
75% of that cost or less is the cost of sourcing, treating, and producing water.
Okay, so, so that's probably where you came up with your 25% initially then.
Yeah, we came up with that a while back.
It's kind of a break-even point.
It wasn't very scientific, but there is a, you know, there's, there are costs associated with repairing pipes, and fixing hydrants, and payroll, and all that, and those don't change if you make more or less water, okay? What, what, what it is, is electricity and chemicals, and wear and tear on the pumping machinery. It's, it, it could be 75% or it could be less.
Okay.
But I would say our fixed costs are at least 25%. So I, you know, I don't think we're, we're giving away water.
Right.
Quick, couple questions I could. One is, with this gentleman, you know, if, if we, if we follow the recommendation of the 25% thing, I, I agree we should have a discussion about moving forward, but for this, for this gentleman, that would bring his total bill down to a little less than $11,000, whereas it used to be $26,000. So that's a big abatement total, when you consider the sewer and the water. So I would hope this gentleman would be quite happy with an abatement from, a total abatement from 26 grand, $26,000 down to about 10 and a half, or 10, 10.8. That's my first comment. Second comment is about the bills. Al, is, if a, are these bills accurate as to when the water actually gets used?
To when the meter was read.
To when the meter was, to when the meter was read?
See, the date of the reading?
Yeah, okay, so here's my question.
9:20.
In June 14th, the usage was 6,440.
Yep.
And then on September 20th, it was 1.89 million.
Yep, so it was between June 14th and September 20th is when this water flowed.
Isn't unusual for pipes to freeze?
To break in September or something, yeah.
It isn't unusual for them to break then, though.
Right.
So John just brought you a good point when I read it. Did they try and turn it off, and they broke the handle? Is that what happened?
No.
What was the, you went in, and it was like an old brothel?
They were, they were called, they went to do the reading in September...
An old iron service?
And said, there's water running under this house. And then they read the meter, and that's the reading.
Something doesn't...
I'm still fine with the abatement thing, but something doesn't pass the sniff test here.
Me, because of the time of year?
Yeah, he called the water department in August to be disconnected, yet the bill reading was in September, and he claims it was frozen?
Well, it wasn't frozen September, August.
No, no, he said that it broke because of ice.
It said broke, yeah. Water was under your, the shut-off rod was broken.
I'm, no, it says the water, I'm just reading Al's memo, it's, Al is reporting back to us what the gentleman reported to Al, and it says the water line, during the winter, the water line froze. Again, I'm still fine with this, abatement for this gentleman, but I'm just curious.
Yeah.
The result, at some point, during the winter, the water line froze and expanded. That, that's not the case. But here's the part that got me also, it says the water department was unable to shut off, shut off the rod, because the rod was broken. So was it...
That's, that's extraneous, though.
That's his comment?
Yeah, no, that's, 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 that's the guy who was going there to do the inspection. This is the rod at the street, not...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is the street, what's called the street stop, the street shut-off. Right, it has, that's, at the, at the, at the water main.
So nothing froze, because it happened between June 14th and September 20th.
He just broke, and then it broke by some unknown...
Yeah, he got two low bills, he got a low bill in March and in June, which, uh...
Yep.
Actually were, if you know, they were higher than, if you look at the billing, his billing was zero, zero usage, 100 usage, and then it went up eight times that, and then it went up eight times that, you know, and then it, then it had this huge thing. So something was leaking in there, and then something let go.
Regardless of the mechanism...
Yeah.
It definitely let go between June and that next reading.
Yeah, because see, he had, they were using almost no water, and then all of a sudden using this 5,800 gallons in a quarter, and then another 6,400 gallons, so something was leaking all that time, and then it burst and let it rip, so...
Well, if we're gonna stick with the plan, why don't we, when Sean's back, why don't we put on the agenda to try and just figure out what we wanna do with those abatements, to see if we wanna put a ceiling on them going forward?
You know, you, yeah, or, or not do abatements. It's...
The only thing I say is, sometimes you have mistakes that happen, or I say mistakes, things beyond your control occur. It's always nice to have that, but the question is, you know, the, I keep calling it the equities, because in this case, I'm kinda like scratching my head going, surprised that, they must have been there during the summer. I would have assumed there was something going on.
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, we heard it when we're there.
2 million gallons.
That's a lot.
It's a lot of water.
Well, the engineer's calculations show it's 140,000 gallons a day, so that's...
Yeah, and...
Right, with a pipe of that diameter, so that's...
Think of, think of a five-gallon bucket, and put it in your sink, and how long it takes to fill up a five-gallon bucket from your sink, okay?
I'm surprised the house didn't float away, really, without that kinda water.
So I mean, that's, that's the rate the water's flowing, and that area is a, is a high-pressure area, because it's at sea level. You know, it's the highest pressure is down by the sea level.
Do you need a dollar value, or, because you, the subtracting of the $47, or whatever you wanted, I think that's...
57.
Motion, do you need to abate it to a total bill of?
I think what you are doing is abating, you're abating $3,619 and $11,821.
Do you wanna try a motion?
I'll try one.
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to abate number WS-13-1 for $3,619.43?
And the sewer for?
And the sewer for $57.3...
No, $11,821.
11,821.89.
$11,821.89, thank you.
Second.
And then later on, we'll, we should address the whole abatement process.
For the comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, so what I would suggest is, is 350 other cities and towns, let's find out what the water and sewer abatement policies are in some of those communities, and we can bring it back and see how our poll follows, and if it's in line.
Sounds good.
I like that cap idea.
Um, agenda item number six.
Thanks, Al.
This is the economic development study, and for ideas reported on this floor, and the Economic Development Committee will come at a later meeting.
Yes.
Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al.
Tricia, one question on this. We did get an email about the budget for the Economic Development Committee also today, saw one somewhere, and they talked about Phase 1 being done. Have I said, do we have that yet?
It's in draft form, where the EDC has made final comments. However, I reviewed it and had a number of comments, and so I'm meeting tomorrow with Laura, with the person who did it, to share my comments.
Okay, can we get a, a copy, even if it's of a draft, next week? And then Phase 2, I guess, is underway.
There's three phases in total, and Phase 2, they saved money on Phase 1, so my understanding is they can go right into Phase 2 and have the funds for that, and then FY '15 budget costs includes Phase 3, which is $11,000.
Could we, in the process, get, so, just so I understand, the, the report has the comments of the EDC? Is that what it is right now?
No, the report was prepared by MAPC, and a draft was given to the EDC.
And did they generate comments?
And they generated comments to be corrected on the draft.
Can we get theirs and yours, so we know who's made revisions?
I do not know their comments.
Oh, you don't?
No, I do not. I was, I, I got a copy of the draft, and then learned it was on this agenda to be presented to you, and I sort of stopped that, so I could make with them, and share some comments.
I don't see it, because I'd like to know what was the original document provided, people who are making comments to it, because I like to see what people are interjecting, whether I agree with or disagree, it's just, it's always helpful to see what's going before it's ultimately finalized.
That was part of the concern, is a number of department heads were interviewed, expressing opinions that aren't necessarily those of the management, meaning the board and the town administrators, so those are the nature of, yeah.
So John, you wanna see, if we can get the earliest copy of whatever draft they have?
Perfect.
Yep, I have that in my office, I can give it to you.
The other thing is, it's interesting with the three, three parts to the study, or three, three parts of these things coming on, I, I, I for one would be very hesitant to be spending a lot of money on making, taking any action on anything significant until we see all, you know, Part 1 is done, Part 2 is done, Part 3 is done, because presumably, there's gonna be a lot of discussion of each as we, as we move forward, so I'd like, if we just continue to move forward in a very stepwise, methodical way, that seems to make sense to me.
Yeah, I had a very good meeting with Chris McConaughey last week, who's the chair, and I think we both agreed that the communication between this board and EDC can be expanded, and especially since they're, the study's ready, and there's multiple phases, so I think they're looking forward to more dialogue, and coming in more as part of their charge requires, so I'm hopeful that we'll be moving in the right direction.
Item number seven, award the contract for this comedic design of the public safety complex.
Move to postpone.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Discussion of the land donation guidelines. This is item number eight, we've talked about this last meeting, Tricia gave us what we asked, the one-page bullet point that gives us the guidelines to... This is item number eight. We've talked about this last meeting. Tricia gave us what we asked, the, uh, one-page bullet point that gives us the guidelines to follow when someone comes before us to donate land, uh, town, land to the town, and, you know, I just, once we all look at it, if we have other bullet points we want to add, then that's...
Yeah.
That's fine.
I have one bullet point. I would just like to add intent of the donator, of the donor, excuse me. Just make sure that's... Other than that, I got nothing else to add. I think this is good, looks good.
And I imagine over the years, this will expand to add more things to consider. So, can I have a motion to adopt these as the guidelines?
Move the board of selectmen vote to adopt the board of selectmen and departmental guidelines for consideration of donations of town land as presented and slightly modified.
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
Tony, I have one thing to add to that, just related to this. The last piece of land the board voted to accept was for non-conservation purposes. That's correct, right? Um, and I, I should have realized at that time, and I didn't, and Jim reminded me, that other than donations accepted for conservation, donations of land need town meeting approval. So, if you want me to put that on the warrant for acceptance as non-conservation, um, I can do that, or you can, at your next meeting, rescind your acceptance as non-conservation and accept it as conservation.
Why don't we think about that over the next two weeks and...
Okay.
Can we just, can we just put that on the...
As a tentative.
As a tentative, uh, later?
So, town meeting could say yes. And town meeting could say no. For whatever reason, the town meeting in its wisdom. Town meeting would say no. Then we would go back to the donor.
If you wanted it not for conservation purposes.
Yeah. Or we go back to the donor and say, "Thanks, but no," or we could just say, "Okay, we'll take it for conservation purposes." After town meeting says no for non-conservation purposes.
Theoretically.
So I know what I have to think about.
All right. Thank you.
And I think, you know, most of the town pieces are, you know, insignificant in terms of the big picture. I, I would guess that any large one we'd want to bring before the town anyways.
Yeah, that's interesting. You can take it for conservation purposes, but you can't take it back unless the town as a whole decides to say, "We'll take it back."
Because conservation's gonna be passive, so if it's for any other purpose, then it means it's, yeah. And I should, I should have remembered that.
I knew it went the other way if you sold. I didn't realize it went in the direction both ways. Something I learned every...
Cool. Yeah, learn something new every meeting.
Agenda item number five is to adopt the Cituit Harbor Community Building.
Number nine.
Number nine, yes. Tricia pulled together this based on the feedback, and there's a number of items to potentially discuss... On this. Any... Feedback on these, um, the talking points that she put on her, on the front page?
No, I liked the way it actually was, uh, the way it set up the events, the rental fees, kind of in a gradual or a sliding scale between private events, both out, out-of-town residents and then nonprofits. Thought it was well done.
I think it's much better after your input at the last meeting, actually.
Good job.
Okay.
More brilliant. So we've got...
All issues.
So just, just to clear, in terms of the cost, as, that's the thing we're talking about, it says a two-hundred-dollar cleaning and security deposit from all renters, which is returned after your event, pending any issues. So that's two hundred dollars in totality, right? Not a two hundred dollars for both? And that is the cost that it takes to clean the place?
Yes.
So if they leave it?
Yes. That, that figure we do know.
And the, uh, for, uh, facility use for a single six-hour block is four hundred dollars?
For a non-resident, right?
For a private event, for non-residents, and then, um, for, oh, that's non-resident, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and then the resident's three hundred.
And then the three hundred dollar is for the resident rate, and then for nonprofits, it's fifty dollars.
I just have a question, like on the police detail, just, and I know it's stated, and it's, it's a great idea, I like it, but if it was, if you go down to the nonprofit, would that still come into play for a nonprofit if it was in excess of a hundred?
Probably.
Yeah, it's just, if it's a hundred people, okay, good. I just, I, I think it's a good idea.
Open the bids for the reservationist on Monday.
Sheila, I mean, Kevin, I gotta remind Sheila that bid opening on Monday for the reservationist.
When do they do, Monday, on Monday?
Yeah, the bid opens on Monday, I think at ten AM.
Oh, we can change that on the note.
So, um, go ahead.
I just had a minor point at the end.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that the building was open for, um, Community Christmas, or Community Christmas where they had the, um, Santa's role, and I think it went very well, um, it was well-attended and held a lot of people, and I think everyone had a good time there. There's obviously some stuff we're still doing there.
Roof, there's roof from the last storm we had, there's some roof issues. Actually, this senior center had to move their Christmas thing to St. Luke's because...
Correct.
It's not the part that was destroyed, which we repaired from last year, but...
It's a different area.
The other area, um, and Kevin's working on that, so.
So what, what's a, a date, then the rugs will go in after that, and then...
Sheetrock.
Breaks are, should be, be doing, done fairly soon, um...
Wasn't it like, all the things were like beginning of January?
Right, well, what happened is, we sort of separated the carpeting because the area where the manager, social services, and the fax coordinator are, that carpeting area and everything was sort of bifurcated from the rest, so it could be done, and then they've got to come in and do the rest of the carpet now, so the job got sort of split up unintentionally, instead of them coming in and doing the whole thing. But I'm pretty sure it's gonna be done by the end of the year. I'll double-check with Kevin tomorrow.
I had a question about that, Tricia. Someone brought this up at the meeting we were at the other night. Um, the manager of social services, are they gonna have a separate private office? Because it's required under HIPAA for her license as well as, as far as the town is concerned.
There will be, um, the answer is no, um, that, um, there's an opportunity for Laura to have private counsel by putting a door in that space right now, which she's already discussed with Kevin.
Okay.
Um, the other thing is, is that Mayor Anne Marie is going to be there very infrequently, and Laura will be alone ninety percent of the time, so I'm not concerned about that issue at all.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, Rick?
Two quick comments. Um, Tricia, the user regulations, rental consent, and release from liability and indemnity agreement. Big legal thing in the back. That's really important, I think, and in the document we've been looking at, that goes over the mission and the usage policy and all that, I don't think there's any reference that says the person has actually read the regulations as well. I just think there should be some cross-reference. You know, at the end of the user agreement, it says, "I have read and understood the above and my responsibility for adhering to the policy above," but I don't think it says anywhere that asks them to confirm that they've read that user regulations, the, the real regulation, regulation thing, and it might be worthwhile cross-referencing that.
They have to sign that.
Okay, I should cover it then.
That's what I said in my memo, that we're making them sign both.
Sign both, okay.
Yep.
I was unclear on that.
Because that was a problem, is it, some was in the policy, some was in the agreement, and so instead of trying to bring them all over duplicatively, I made them sign off on both.
And then on the, the registration form itself? Cituit Harbor Community Building Registration Form? One question in general, are forms like that in PDF on the web and can be filled out in the PDF?
Yep, yep, this is actually the Maritime Center form, we copied exactly.
So they can fill it out on there, all right. And then, are those dollar figures in the box that says for office use only, are those dollar figures correct? I think they might need to be reconciled with the latest figures.
Yeah, you're right.
I understand.
Yep, thank you.
So those, those dollar figures need to be reconciled. Yeah, move the board of selectmen vote to adopt the usage policy, Cituit Harbor Community.
Second?
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Moving on to agenda item number ten, which is to vote some annual license renewals.
Yeah.
Is she here?
Yep.
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the following common, common vicular's licenses for 2014. Reynolds Package Store, Wilbur's, Kayla's, Sam's on the Harbor, Egypt Country Store, Rebus Pizza, Ronnie Schoen's General Store, Sand Hill's General Store, and the Coffee Corner.
Second?
Second by Mr. Murray. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the following Hocker Peddler's license for 2014, JP's Hot Dog Express, and Dell's Lemonade.
Second?
Second by Mr. Murray. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous also.
Finally, I'll move the board of selectmen vote to renew the following Class II licenses for 2014, Seacrest Auto and Allen's Auto.
Second?
Second by Mr. Murray. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. It's nice thinking about Delphine on a snowy night like this, isn't it? Moving on to agenda item number eleven, which is to close the warrant, uh, close the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll move the board of selectmen vote to close the April fourteenth, 2014 annual town meeting warrant at seven thirty-seven PM.
Second?
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Um, Tricia, do you know how many requests we got for additional?
Articles.
Articles on this?
Additional articles?
Yeah.
Two.
Two.
Yep.
Would you like to know what that is?
Sure.
Because that was my intent.
Oh. But you wanted me to ask?
It's been a long day. Um, we received two by the deadline yesterday, which was twenty-five thousand dollars to do a feasibility study for a new senior center, and, um, the second was to allocate a million dollars to, for foreshore protection.
A billion dollars?
Yes.
Saw one for, um, was it South Shore, uh, South Shore Volk?
Those were petition. We have some other articles, street ex, non-monetary, just in time, um, non-monetary, uh, Walnut Tree, street acceptance. Um, South Shore Volk wants to establish a stabilization fund, so that's town meeting acceptance. Um, I'm trying to think of the other ones that are non-monetary. Those are the ones, um, that come to mind. There may be one or two. Glades Road easement, um, similar to the one we did down in the mine it last year, so.
Right, and did the one for the senior center, did that give specifics of location?
No.
No, so just, uh, just kind of general?
Transfer, right, yep. Yep, on a separate parcel.
On a separate parcel.
Any separate parcels.
Yes, I think it's fairly generic.
Take a second to recognize Representative Cantwell.
He's actually here for my report, and, um, that's, that's why I have these two phones here. He was calling me, and I was texting him, and he's saying I'm on my way, so I was gonna have you go into executive session till he got here and come out, but your timing was impeccable, so.
Well, we are on agenda item number twelve, which is, uh, the report in the week ahead from the town administrator.
They vote on closing, they closed, they voted?
Yes. Okay, okay. All right, so, um...
Seven thirty-seven.
So, um, first of all, just, as, as part of my report, I wanted to, um, I'll, I'll be brief because Representative Cantwell's here. Um, I did want to acknowledge Laura Harbottle, the town planner, who, um, this week on Monday, received an award from the Massachusetts Association of Planning Directors, along with Tom Broderick, the planner in Duxbury, and Paul Halke Otis, uh, town planner in Marshfield, for the work they did on the Sea Level Rise Grant, and working, the three communities working together, and I, I particularly want to commend Laura for all the work she did on that, and, um, we're entering into another phase of that study, so, um, good work on that. I do have quite a bit to tell you on the FEMA map appeals for the town, and the status of the town's appeal, and also what's happening nationally and federally. Um, I attended the Marshfield Selectmen's meeting last night, along with Representative Cantwell. Congressman Keating was there and gave an update, so I have a lot to go over, um, with you, and if I can just get my notes from that up on my phone, which I was taking them on, um, will be good. So, um, let's talk about things, what's happening at the federal level now with the FEMA maps. Um, as you know, this area in particular, in Marshfield, and our coastal coalition have been, I think, um, the leaders in raising this issue statewide, and also with the delegation, uh, as far as the impact of these maps, and sort of the challenges and issues that have come about this wholesale implementation of them, and what it means for homeowners. And it's not only Massachusetts or the east coast, it's everybody in rivers, uh, plains, ponds, um, so this is a national movement afront. Um, the Massachusetts delegation has been unanimous in its support of, um, bringing awareness to this issue, and, um, we're very fortunate, along with people like our state representative, Jim Cantwell. So what's happening there, and this is what Congressman Keating reported to the Marshfield Selectmen last night, is that the legislation that's before Congress right now would be a four-year delay in the FEMA map implementation, if it passes. May, mostly centering around the reasons that there's an affordability component in these flood insurance rates and, um, impacts, and that has not been addressed yet by FEMA, so that's a reason. Um, there's also a cap on the state about how, each, the state on how much money can actually spend on flood work, and they're looking to release that cap. There are currently seventy-two sponsors of this bill before Congress, so Congressman Keating is, uh, hopeful it will pass fairly soon. There's bipartisan support in both chambers. The other thing that Congressman Keating did is he took the Marshfield appeal, and he gave it to a team of scientists and, um, professors at UMass Dartmouth, and had them look at the methodology in Marshfield's appeal, and as you know, our appeals were very similar. We used the same consultants, and, um, looked to see how FEMA applied. And that report came back and said there were a number of issues, um, in the FEMA maps and the assumptions, um, and some of these were, and, and that the benefit of having UMass do this was that they could provide an outside third-party impartial objective review. Um, and their conclusion was that the science FEMA used was not reflective of why storms occur here for the mid-Atlantic, because they used west coast modeling. Um, so that, that is one of the issues there. Um, so, hi, his position is that the country, or the maps themselves, people, and organizations, and agencies need more time to do this right, and help the people who are gonna be impacted by it. And that the only challenge he sees in Congress is there's many, um, elected officials in Washington who don't believe that the government should be involved in flood control issues and flood insurance at all. Um, but as I noted earlier, there are seventy-two sponsors, and, um, it affects, again, not only the ocean, but ponds, tributaries, streams, or whatever. So, um, so that's from Congressman Keating, shared at the Marshfield Selectmen last night. I put a call in this morning to Congressman Lynch's office and left a message there. Marshfield, um, heard yesterday, um, so, so I got a harbinger of what we got today, was that, um, the, their two appeals, one by Ransom Consulting and one by Woods Hole Engineering, the Woods Hole Group, um, appeal was accepted, and that, um, not in terms of any changes, and I want to be clear about that for people listening at home, but, uh, in terms of the baseline methodology used in the submittal of the appeal, they've come back and asked for some additional questions. The ransom consulting appeal, the, um, FEMA did not, lack of a better word, buy into the methodology used there. That does not mean, however, that's the end of the road. We can also, in some, we can appeal the appeal, we can go to panel. Um, so, so I think that's encouraging news on both parts, um, and again, Marshfield and Cituit have partnered along this the whole time, and we continue to do that. Um, essentially, um, what, one of the challenges is, and one of the reasons I contacted Congressman... Lynch's office this morning, was that when we submitted the appeals that we had to submit by October 16th, FEMA had a 30-day process to ask us questions, get clarification, um, they took 60 days, because we all got those letters today and yesterday. They want us to respond to them by January 12th. So, and there's a couple holidays coming up, and stuff like that, so that's one of the things I think Representative Cantwell, um, might speak to in a little bit. Um, and then I just have one more thing of notes, if I can find it, which I did have, and just bear with me for one second. So, so some of the issues in terms of FEMA using west coast modulating as opposed to east coast, those are big picture issues that really Congress and the feds need to deal with, because FEMA is a federal agency. But one of the things they didn't, um, address in the appeals that's fairly important and is highly technical, and I wrote it down verbatim, but I don't know if I'll convey it, is that, um, in both of, in the appeals, there was a datum conversion issue, and Rick, you might be able to do this, and that we maintained that FEMA was using incorrect, uh, stillwater elevations, and forgot to convert one datum to another when they migrated over. And if that's the case, then that affects the entire town, as opposed to just individual transits, and that was not addressed, um, in terms of what they wanted, as far as more information, so we need to drill down more and try to get more information on that. Um, and then the other issue again, is that, um, there's, there's a dispute in what the ransom consulting, uh, appeal was based on, was this whole idea of wave setup, and Doris Clary actually has, um, she said that, you know, it's all based on if the wave comes over, where it goes after it goes over, where it's supposed to be stopped, and they assume that it just keeps going and going and going and going, and as Doris points out, it, it, in a lot of cases, it doesn't, it just goes right back, and that, that, that's not accounted for. But again, that's sort of a bigger federal issue, but I did want to mention that, because that's the avenue that Congressman Keating's gonna be pursuing, as far as how this stuff is applied. Um, I think I've covered it all from that perspective, and I know Representative Cantwell has additional information, so, um, Jim, if you wanna talk to the board.
Sure. I think you covered everything, sure. I know it's a stormy night, I just wanted to come and make sure to, uh, to add my two cents with things. One, for people watching, by the way, it's impossible, I, I may take one, but I, so that people know that the level of work that you have put into this, uh, from the very beginning, is a thing that I always want to reinforce, because last night, it was nice to hear Congressman Keating coming almost full circle, uh, this, the whole issue, we didn't learn about this until, really it was late June into July, when Doris Clary from Situate came to a coastal meeting that we had, that you'd come to over in Marshville, talking about a number of things that, that we wanted to work on, uh, that related to C Street dredging and other things that were important to us. But none of us knew, uh, until I came here, David Ball did that presentation, saying there's a Bigger Waters Act, and there are MAPs. And, and the, the two things that, if people are watching, and, and they're only getting pieces of it, I just want to take a minute to make sure that they know of the work that this board has done, because from the beginning, when, when David came and made that presentation to you, I know that the board was very active, this board having, um, you know, making sure to speak to, to our state delegation, federal delegation, we had, a crew of us went up, we had a hearing at the State House, where Situate really was the tip of the spear for this issue, uh, but I know Marty and Sean had come up, and all of you had written a letter to, to the legislature, where it was saying that we get it, and we just heard about Laura getting an award, uh, for doing, uh, planning. The town of Situate has, since the blizzard of 78, has been one of the leading towns planning for adaptation. We get it, we know that these storms are happening with greater frequency, we've changed our zoning, we've done all those things, but we knew from the beginning that these maps, as we were finding, that the maps were inaccurate. So the first meeting, as you all remember, we, we had a meeting in Boston, uh, that, Tricia, we put together with, with Congressman Keating, Congressman Lynch, with the FEMA representatives, and they're, at their very first presentation, when they started talking about waves, uh, being, uh, in downtown Front Street, coming in at about twice the height that they were in the blizzard of 78, we knew that there was an error. Um, and I want folks to know, watching, that, that because you all took the step of hiring ransom engineering, hiring Woods Hole, there are a lot of communities in this state that were handed the MAPs and, and just didn't have the time to act, and it wasn't fair to you, this, we are gonna push back about the amount of time that we have to, to follow up on our appeal. Um, but just so people watching, no, you were given the MAPs, we weren't given all the data, uh, until, uh, you know, it was, what, I think, three weeks after the, the original MAPs came out, um, so for your appeals, people should know that taxpayers' money went, went to good use, because everything that you pointed out in the appeals that you filed, have now been backed up by two independent groups, uh, that Congressman Keating enlisted, uh, from UMass Dartmouth, uh, and their, their main findings are that the stillwater elevation, uh, we, we made calls around, that there's a Brook Township, New Jersey, that had their MAPs overturned, because FEMA did the same methodology that they were using here in Situate, that we, we say at the beginning they got it wrong, they started at the wrong height, and that could make a difference to some two feet, when, when these new MAPs came out, and people were told that the water's gonna reach further in, um, well, no, it, it, there should be, if these MAPs are, are either amended or thrown out, we're gonna have a lot of people in Situate whose homes will no longer be in a flood zone, but those who are in the flood zone, when they talked about the, the elevation that they're supposed to be at, it, it could save them a lot of money. So your appeals, I know it was a tough decision for you to make, but your, your appeals on the stillwater elevation, uh, for both ransom and Wood Hole group pointed out that they thought those are wrong, and for the wave action, how those are wrong. The, the quick update, then, uh, we all were texting last week, when Congressman Keating, uh, first, uh, came out with his report, Tony, and I remember texting you saying, it looks like very good news. Uh, so the good news is, on the MAPs, that, that he believes there's now independent verification that they got it wrong, and, and the push now, the entire congressional delegation is asking FEMA to withdraw the MAPs, or to at least rewrite them and give us time. Why it's important, for everyone watching, we're being asked to accept these MAPs at our spring town meeting, and, uh, you know, we, we're gonna, we, it's very hard for us to be, on one hand, saying, accept the MAPs, because we, we want to have all the, the support for FEMA for a whole host of, of storm damage issues that come. On the other hand, our experts are telling us that they're inaccurate, so we need, we need Congress to get them to withdraw those, or, or to, to give us more time. So that's one important thing. The Bigger Waters Act, uh, that you, we, you had a tutorial from David Ball, so I won't repeat it, uh, but the other update i- is that they do have a critical number of people who are now supporting, uh, freezing, uh, the rates for people, if it's their primary home, and they have not had serious repetitive damage, uh, their flood insurance would be frozen for four years. But one thing we have to tell people watching, is if they're still getting bills right now, um, you know, until that freeze takes place, they still have to pay them, uh, and we don't want, the, the thing we want to tell people is absolutely do not let their flood insurance lapse under any condition, uh, people, we've had two homeowners here in Situate that came to us, who were handed bills for $68,000, both of those were erroneous, uh, and, and FEMA, we had an underwriting department come out, they've, they've dropped them down, they went from $64,000 down to $3,600, when you want to talk about errors, right? But we're still telling people, make sure not to let their MAPs lapse. Congress, we, knock on wood, they will act, but it could be a period of months. Uh, Tricia, you're absolutely right, that, that the presentation that, that the congressman made is the same, I know I came and reported to you after flying to Washington, we sat in on a hearing, uh, and the most encouraging thing were, some of the US senators testifying lived in inland states, and they were furious. So one senator from, I think it was Oklahoma, who said that, that FEMA now is charging greater rates, because they were making people now use their first floor being their basement, and the senator pointed to the administrator from FEMA and said, I take umbrage of that, every home in my state has to have a basement, because that's our last place of refuge when we have tornadoes. So there's a lot of anger, a lot of pushback, I just think, you know, we all, you and I are kind of caught in the middle here, because we're, we're trying to give people advice, saying, we think Congress is gonna act, but in, in the interim, um, what you, the work that you did to appeal these MAPs is, is the best offense we have, and the interim, we'll, we'll continue to work with people individually, if they have questions, by all means to, to call my office, we'd be happy to help, uh, and we know that the actions are really at the federal level. But I hope people watching know that, that you guys really stuck yourselves out there, you're one of the only towns that appealed, you now, because of your appeal, it's gonna help people all up and down the coast of Massachusetts, and I can tell you right now, Suffolk County thanks you, because we've been having calls from people in Boston, just got their MAPs, and they said, you know, how'd you do it, and what can we do? So you're, you're gonna be getting some more calls around the state. Thank you.
Before you go, Jim, um, you know, thank you for, for us, I mean, we, we had a little piece to do with it, but a lot of it, and most of it had to do with, with the town administrator and the department heads, that led up the charge and did all the work for hours and hours, on weeks on weeks, to get everything together for these consultants to do the work that they did. But most importantly, we need to thank you, because you represented this town 100%, you got the federal and state, uh, support that you needed to get this pushed. I mean, I must say, initially, and I, I have to thank Dave Ball, and Doris, and Joe, um, from Marshfield, who really started this whole ball roll, uh, ball rolling. Who would've thunk that we could've changed something, you know, at a federal level, from a little town of Situate, saying, this doesn't look right to us? And we did it with the town's support, moving up to your support, and pushing it to all the levels that it did, and, and it was a success, and, you know, you are really to thank for this, because you were, you were definitely the, the pushing ball behind this whole thing. Um, and, you know, we saw, Marty and I saw Congressman Lynch this weekend, and he couldn't stop talking about it enough, um, you've, you've garnered his support, and it's, it's really made a big difference, so, you know, I want to thank you, and I'm sure the rest of the board feels the same way, so. Situate's lucky, you know, to have you as a representative and, and working so hard for us.
No, thank you, and I'm glad you underscored this with all the staff, uh, because it, I know this really, it became an unfounded, unfounded mandate, with everyone working so hard, when we had 2,000 people come for that one public meeting over at Furnace Brooks School, and all your staff had to be there to help show people their MAPs.
Rick? Yeah, I got just a couple things to say. One is, I'm pleased to hear about the role of UMass Dartmouth, I know a lot of the people there, obviously, and they're a bunch of good eggs, and there's three or four people I know off the top of my head, who most likely are involved in this, and, and they're very good, so I really take a lot of faith in what that group says. That datum issue, of all the things I've heard about being potential problems of what FEMA has done, that's a big one, because if that baseline is off, and as Tricia said, then everything needs to get redone, and even if you're still in this flood zone, when it comes redone, as Jim said, then, you know, you're less, less flooded. And that datum issue is, is pretty complicated, and it happens all the time. So I'm very encouraged to hear that that issue has been potentially highlighted, at least by the, um, at least by the Woods Hole Group study. Um, and then just a quick comment, on the, at the federal level, it's just gonna be interesting seeing what's happened, what's gonna happen with this, because on the one hand, as Tricia said, there's a bunch of people that think that the, the feds, FEMA shouldn't be involved in any insurance at all, and on the other side of the aisle, there's a lot of people that feel the feds shouldn't be involved in insurance for completely other reasons, namely, in 100 years, it's all gonna be flooded anyway, so why are we doing anything about it? So although it's great that there's 72 people on board right now, I'll just be very interested to see what happens on the national level, because what they're facing here in Oklahoma, not only for tornadoes, but also with, uh, floodplains on rivers, and as rainstorms increase and so on, there's big flooding issues there as well. It's just gonna be interesting, looking at what actually happens in DC on this over the next couple of months. Which brings me to my last question, since DC is probably gonna take a while on this, what do we do at town meeting? You know, I'm kind of left here, okay, there's some outstanding issues, but, you know, four years is certainly a long time to delay things and so on, at least additional studies and getting it right will take another year, at least. But, so what do we, and I understand people need to pay, 'cause do not let insurance lapse, and I also understand, therefore, we probably need to pass something, so we don't get accused of not doing something, but what are we gonna, what are we supposed to do?
I, I think what we should do, and, and respectfully, as a board, you should be writing, and, and we gotta talk to our federal legislators, saying, every single community in Massachusetts that has these new MAPs, uh, is being asked, it's, it's a patently unfair thing to say, accept these MAPs, when, when we already have our pending appeals, and we now have, you know, independent groups saying that they're, they're erroneous, our own people we've hired saying that they're wrong, down in New Jersey, they were thrown out, up in Portland, Maine, they're thrown out, so it puts us in a terrible position, because on one hand, if you don't accept the MAPs, we risk our whole community rating system, we, we risk all of, FEMA subsidizes, actually, I don't like that word, FEMA underwrites this whole program, for the flood insurance program, people get their flood insurance for above 50% of what it would cost on the open market, uh, and we always see, you know, when we're fighting with, down in DC, saying, look, this program from 1968, right up until Hurricane Katrina, turned a $10 billion profit. It has, but clearly we've had severe storms, and we have to rework the program, but it's a very successful program, we don't want to see them throw the whole program out, and that, that's what will be, when the MAPs, that, when we're being told at town meeting, that, that's what they'll say, is you must accept them, or you lose that, that subsidy, that underwriting.
So pending us writing letters and keeping pushing, requesting the relaxation of the requirement that we accept these MAPs, even knowing that they're flawed, but as it stands now, we have to accept the MAPs unless we risk, or we risk losing all that other stuff?
I, I think for, for right now, right now, unless they have a change of either giving us a reprieve of more time...
Correct.
Or of, of just outright withdrawing the MAPs, that, that will be the decision before us, it's either accepting flawed MAPs, or, uh, we'll, we'll have to talk to, to town council and others to say, do we accept, do we just re-accept the old MAP, saying that we're still, we're gonna endorse, you know?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so we will have to, so we'll have to do a place saver, but it, it's an incredibly difficult position for all of us to be in.
Yeah.
And, and I know, for, for our citizens who look to us, they'll say, what, you're telling us these MAPs are wrong, and that our houses maybe shouldn't be in, or, or they're at higher elevation, yet the federal government's saying you must accept them. It really, it's putting all of us in a tough position, so...
We're in the same position the houses, the homeowners are in, the homeowners are having to pay us so they don't get it, and we gotta keep...
Yeah, yeah.
So Jim, I think your, um, suggestion of maybe having a, an acceptance of prior MAPs would be an attempt to try to undo, um, what ultimately would be, you have to take, either vote for it or you don't, those are the new MAPs. My question, one question I have, you don't have an answer, nobody does at this point, is, excuse me, in the event that we were to accept the new MAPs, what does that do to our appeal? Does it nullify it, which is a big issue?
Yeah, yeah.
Which I think is observant to say, maybe we adopt the previous MAPs, which are only...
2000, actually...
Or something like this. Nine?
No.
There was one in 2006, I know, for sure, I know for sure, and then we had a more recent one...
At the town meeting, I want to say 2011.
Okay.
This is what gets me the most, and that is that, as a federalist and believing in, yes, bigger government can sometimes help things, this is a typical example of how big government goes awry, and they're using a characteristic approach to say, either accept it, or you're gonna suffer the penalties, and it's a shame.
Right.
It's a shame to everybody in this town, it's a shame to everybody in the Commonwealth. You know, you're wasting valuable time fighting for this, as well as all the other people, and the town put an enormous amount of time for three months, from the end of July, all the way until the filing of October, and a lot of people were complaining, what is your town doing? And you hit the nail on the head, our town, along with Marshfield, are the only two that I'm aware of, who actually went to appeal this.
Dexbury as well, but, but our three towns are the only...
On the entire south shore, and I think even to the Cape, and you look at this, and you say, okay, as a result of our peoples spending an awful lot of time, when we get a lot of gripes about what we're doing up here, um, trying to save money for our own town, and ultimately, other towns are gonna maybe ride the coattails, which is great, you know, I have to say, this is one of the things that this town should be very proud of, as well as the other two towns. We're very thankful, you've done a wonderful job, because back at the beginning of August, neither of our, I strike that, you know, our congressman was probably away in the congressional break during the summer, heard about these issues from his other towns, but, you know, between your congressman and Keating and Marshfield, Congressman Lynch, they actually came, they've been participating, Lynch most recently, Keating on Monday in your town, I, I just think it's wonderful to see that, um, what you've done as far as trying to, like electrify, along with everybody else, the people, as, as previously mentioned, um, it's great, this shows what a community can do, and Tony, you're absolutely right, um, people should be proud of what, it's a small town of 18,000 people were able to accomplish to try to get this out.
For the whole country.
But I have to say, it's a shame, you know, this, this whole process has been literally a bag job by FEMA, but we are stuck, because we can't risk losing, you know, potential subsidies in the future, in the event that, not subsidies, but the underwriting group repair.
Right.
I just want to say, thank you personally, you've done a great job, and, uh, both Tricia and you, and other town department heads have just, uh, represented the town, not just adequately, extremely well, so, yeah, thank you.
Jim, what do you think the chances are that they, that they may pull the MAPs prior to the town meeting? I mean, the way it's going right now?
I, I think with the entire congressional delegation, soon to be endorsing that letter, with having enough evidence, uh, Trish should know, um, when you all, when you filed your appeals, we, we'd gone up and we saw the, the acting administrator, uh, Administrator Ford, and talked to him about the issues we had early on, and, and they already had a semblance that they may have had some mistakes, right? So, so, not putting words in this man's mouth, but, but he said, look, if you're giving us scientific evidence that we made a mistake, there's a precedent in other areas that we've, we've withdrawn MAPs, um, so the combination, it's not just a political thing, it's not just, you know, Congressman Lynch, Congressman Keating, Senator Markey, Senator Warren, it's not just all them saying for political reasons, it's them having actual factual basis now. I, I think that, that at the very least, they'll give us a reprieve from having to, to vote and accept them, if they know that they're already, what they sent back the letter that I saw today, even with ransom, they're sending back, and they, they, our options now are, are saying, if we want to, we're pushing on, part of the appeal is that they got the stillwater elevation wrong, the other part about the wave action they have it wrong, and that, we know, that they use the Pacific model. Those, and, those should be enough for them to withdraw.
Yeah, and the other question...
And the other question I had, Jim, Maxine Waters is backing a bill right now, which almost counteracts her initial bill, right?
I know, I know.
Which is pretty amazing.
Yeah, so people, the act that was passed is the Bigger Waters Act. It's, you know, Congresswoman Waters from California was one of the co-authors-
Right.
-of the original bill. And she's been on, we've been having conference calls every single Friday, and it's actually really interesting, and you all can participate, it's because it's state folks and selectmen, townships from around the country, which is why, there are like ninety-eight different towns that get represented for these calls. She was on one of them, and she said, "I want everyone to know, that when this was being passed, we wanted to protect this program to make sure that it would be fiscally sound, that it would last." But she said, "We never, that every, every person, when they were giving the stats, said that there'd be a select few homes that were going to be affected, and that it would only be at the most a twenty-five percent increase." And we have here in town, we have people who have had one thousand percent increases. And, so, you're right, she is one of the co-authors of the act now to undo what was done before, and freeze it until they have this full actuarial study. And by the way, and I want to stress, we, you know, Situate, we haven't ignored, we know that we, you know, think of all the storms that we've been dealing with over the time, we get it, we're doing all the right things to prepare, and to do our studies so that people know, we're preparing for the future, we're fighting like hell to get money, so we do our infrastructure. We just did that program at the John F. Kennedy Library, pointing out, it was fascinating, when we had the Dutch come and talk about, say, how they can't retreat, if they retreat, they go into Germany. So they did this wonderful presentation of technologically what can be done, but it's going to require a lot of money. So we're doing all this work, and to have this, where they had their third-party group that used poor models from the Pacific, didn't do peer review, would have cost tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars in Situate alone. It really, it really is something that makes us very angry, and my sense is, they're hearing from enough people that they should either amend the maps, or just withdraw them altogether.
Right, good.
Great. Jim, thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim.
Have a great holiday.
You too.
Move on to agenda item number thirteen, other business.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the regular session minutes for December third, two thousand and thirteen.
Second? Second by Mr. Danny. All in favor?
Aye.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the executive session minutes, no release, for January eighth, two thousand and thirteen. You're good.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's three to zero.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the executive session minutes-
We're going to hold off on these, right? Which one are you doing?
I'm doing the last one, Mr. Chairman. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the executive session minutes, no release, for March fifth, two thousand and thirteen.
I'll second that one.
Second by Mr. Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and again, that is three, zero. Mr. O'Toole, who did not vote on those other two. Great. Have a, we have correspondence?
One letter.
One letter.
All right. Okay, Dear Chairman Harris, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, Chief Richard Judge, and the members of your department for the assistance at the second alarm fire in Hull on Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen. The fire at fifty-two A Street had the potential for a severe loss of life, and unfortunately, there were no injuries. The key to our continued success is that we work in a cooperative manner for our safety. The professionalism displayed by the members of your department is an test, the leadership at all levels, and is to be commended. Again, for all of the members of Hull Fire Department, thank you, yours truly, Robert A. Hollingshead, Fire Chief.
Rick, any other?
What's that?
John?
I just wanted to say that I wanted to thank the Water Department, we've had some pipes that have been breaking. Last night, there was one I happened to see, that they were working in the middle of the cold. I just have to say, it's, people don't realize it, but when you go outside in this weather, and you're going into a pit, water's out there, you know, at a moment's notice, and it's not just during the day, it's at night, you got to thank the guys, and the men and the women who are doing this. It's a thankless job, and all we worry about is whether or not the water's clean, but there are people who are really working to try to make it that way. I commend them, so I wanted to make a point on that.
Just to add to that, John, a lot of times, it's not the town's fault. A lot of times, it's a private party that's doing work and something-
I'm saying, most of the breaks we've had in the last six weeks have not been the town's fault.
So the town has to go to the event that was, you know-
This was just a pipe that broke, this had, there was no construction at all, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's cold now.
Right.
I just wanted to say that, you know, that it's thankless, and really, we appreciate it, I do at least. The other thing I was going to say-
I do too.
I think all of us do up here, but the, the other thing is, obviously, for New Year's Eve, or New Year's Day, rather, there's going to be down in Humrock, there's the polar plunge, so to speak, I don't know the exact name of it, but, and the food, or the, ask you to bring canned goods for the Marshfield pantry, food pantry. Here in Situate, there's going to be one down on Jericho, and that's just for the harbor seals, for benefiting sands, and that's going to be, I think, at eleven o'clock on New Year's Day. The last thing I was going to say is, just going to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, those people who don't celebrate Christmas, a Happy Holidays. We, as a board, have worked really hard this past year, and we've made a lot of accomplishments, and I think, reflecting on it, I was thinking about it coming for tonight, how one of our first defining moments of this year happened to be the storm Nemo, and how the town pulled together, and I think it defines this town and its character. You know, there are a lot of families without electricity, but they stuck it out, they stood together for four days. The town worked really hard, and it kind of really identifies who we are, and how we are able to respond and react, and, you know, we've had some changes on the board. We lost a member who dedicated his life for thirty years, public service, just amazing what he had done during that time period, and it's sad to see him go, but like every evolving process, we're very fortunate to have our new member, Marty O'Toole, who was elected to the board. And like any existing, breathing board, there's always people coming, and there are people who are going, and we're very fortunate, this town's very fortunate for who we've had, and who we presently have. I was reflecting further, and trying to figure out some other major issues that the town's been faced with, and the one that came to mind after that was actually FEMA. And I wanted to let you down and say, you know, it worked really hard, and it's three full months, and still, you know, there was a lot of people who were complaining, "What is the town doing?" And they really weren't informed about what the town was actually doing, and I have to say, you know, just what Representative Campwell was suggesting and saying, the town has been benefited by it, and hopefully will benefit more by it, by changing these ridiculous mandates from FEMA. And I just have to say, you know, it shows you what goes on down here, and behind the scenes, that people don't realize. There are other things, that could go on and on and on, but I just think that, you know, more recently, you know, we're looking to repair and fix the water supply, we talk about the pipes, but, you know, that's a major overhaul that we're looking forward to trying to accomplish in the next coming years, and starting next year. And more recently, with our strategic plan, that we'll be rolling out more ideas of what we're trying to do with the middle school, and town hall, safety protection facility, and recently, this past weekend, you know, with the library. So, you know, I think the town's moving in directions, decisions are going to be made, and I just hope people get involved, and, you know, we reflect on this, because, not to travel backwards in time, but I think it just gives us an idea of what we've done, with the hope that going forward in the new year, that we're continuing to move the town in directions that the people really appreciate. And for that, I just say, I wish you well in your holidays, and look forward to seeing you back in January. Thank you.
Marty?
Just a couple of quick things. I just want to report that the volunteers at the transfer station were able to raise, through the thirteenth of December, with a lot of lousy weather we've had, they raised just under seventeen hundred dollars doing the recyclables to go to the food pantry. I just want to thank all of those volunteers for that. As well as Ted Good, he's been out there pushing the Situate food pantry calendars, and I'm not sure exactly where he is on sales, but everybody's really trying to give a little bit of a leg up for the food pantry. I mean, they're, they've been in dire need, and as we know, it's not going to be a very nice winter. And also, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and/or a Happy Holiday, and I guess we'll be seeing you next year.
Couple other things, you still have another week, what's today, Tuesday? So it's a week from Christmas Eve, please shop locally. All the stores in the harbor and north Situate have great products and great deals, so get out there and help support them. I want to take a second to thank Community Christmas for holding the Santa's Roll, it was a great event. I'd like to thank Rob McCary for his participation in it, and for Kelly Doherty for running the event at the Situate Pier Forty-four, Situate Community Harbor Building. Great event, tons of people showed up, and it was really, really a good time. And I also want to congratulate the town, the override passed this past weekend for a library, and so in the upcoming months, we will be starting to move that project forward, so the vote was about a thousand to five hundred-ish. So it was, you know, pretty decidedly voting in favor of it, so congratulations to that group, we look forward to moving forward on that project. And lastly, the sports report. Situate Hockey Team has started their season, I know they won their first game, and they are underway now, unfortunately, we don't have a rink in town, so they play a little bit further away, but, but they are off to a good season, and Mike Green is their coach. And secondly, the basketball, both boys and girls programs start their schedules off on Friday, and the boys are playing at the high school at home, and I encourage everybody